We can do the information items.
Yep.
Right, okay. All right.
Oh yeah, public comment.
Public comment, okay, all right, I got you. Okay, are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, we want to bring this meeting to order, the City Schools Committee meeting for Thursday, July tenth, two thousand and fourteen. Ms. Montora, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Dwin.
Here.
Councilmember Asher.
Here.
Oh, sorry, you're a board member, that's right.
He's not a councilmember yet.
Counselmember Ed. Councilmember Adkin is excused. Councilmember Brinkman.
I am here.
Okay, councilmember West is excused. School Board Member Effelt.
He should be on his way.
School Board Member Kent.
Here.
School Board Member Dice is excused. And School Board Member Potts is excused. And Student Member Carr.
Here.
And Student Member Seth.
Here.
Good and great. Okay, do we have any public comment today, this evening? None? So we will move to the next item. Staff Committee Member Comments. Do we have any staff or member committee comments?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I just want to let everyone know that we're having a successful summer camp. Just to give you an idea, last week, our first week of enrollment was fifty-six participants. But this year, our first week, we had a hundred and fifteen participants. And on week two of last year, sixty-one, and on week two of this year, a hundred and twenty-seven. And I won't go through three, I'll just skip to four, but right now, we have a hundred and forty for this week.
That's great.
So the participation is going up. We've been swimming, we have great field trips, we've got a bunch of great rec leaders this year, and so we're really proud to say that our camps are doing great.
That's doing great. Good news, great news. Anyone else?
I want to say one thing about the camp. It's been wonderful for my children to attend this summer because there are families that they went to ECDC with, or maybe went to Anna Yates with, that have moved out of Emeryville, but that are coming back for the summer camp. So it's been very nice to have their friends back.
Their old friends coming back, that's great.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
Great to hear. Excuse me. I have one comment. I would like to welcome our newest member to the City Schools Committee and our newest member to the Emory Unified School District. Our new superintendent, Dr. John Rubio.
Welcome.
Welcome. Dr. Rubio comes from us, from the Live Oak School District in Santa Cruz, where he served as the Assistant Superintendent there for approximately two years. Before that, previous to that, he worked approximately around fourteen years for the San Francisco Unified School District, concentrating a lot in educational technology, working around curriculum and integration of technology. He also served as a site administrator for the San Francisco Unified School District. And he actually began his career as a teacher in the Compton Unified School District. So we want to welcome him. The Board is very pleased to have Dr. Rubio with us. Staff is pleased. He has been in the district, I believe, a month already in a transition with Dr. John Sugiyama, who was our interim superintendent for the past couple of months. And so he has hit the ground running, and everyone is pleased with him at this time.
Honeymoon's still going.
You're right.
There's a regular update on this.
There's still a great honeymoon, but I must admit, he really came in and got to know staff in his first month. And thus far, it's been a good relationship with staff, and the Board is very, very pleased with that. So, Dr. Rubio, if you have any words or anything you'd like to say, feel free.
I just want to say, one is thank you. I'm really happy to be here. I am definitely running, but I'm not going anywhere, but I'm running. One of the things that I'm doing is making sure our fiscal house is in order. And one of the things I've decided to do is to go through all of our invoices and contracts for last year, which is an interesting experience, but it's something I like to do when I come into a new organization, because it quickly gives me a picture. So, that being said, I want to say thank you to the city, because it's my understanding as well, on the same topic, that you have been really a great partner to us, and you've helped us particularly in times when we weren't doing as well as we're doing now. And part of that, my understanding, is that you had actually helped us in terms of paying for the videotaping of our meetings. So it is my assessment at this time that we are in well enough shape, and we're going to continue to get in better shape, but we are in well enough shape to take that back on. So we will no longer need to have the city paying for the videotaping of our meetings, but I did want to say thank you very much for doing that.
That's good news, every little bit helps.
Every little bit helps, every little bit helps. And that's the way I look at it as well, for other things. But thank you very much, and I wanted to at least let you know that. And we really appreciate the help over the years, and I'm looking forward to the continued partnership. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any more comments, staff committee comments? Okay, well now, we will move back up to item three for the approval of the minutes, since we have a comment.
I guess I have a comment.
Oh, well, go ahead.
We're just doing general, important.
Yes. Committee comments.
All right, I'm fresh from Sacramento.
Looking good, too.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
You have that Sacramento look right now.
Where I'm looking for some nice photos on my phone of some Emory students who were part of the student voice campaign testifying to the State Board today, including our board member, Bray Williams.
Okay, all right.
Complimenting Emory for its student engagement policy.
Right.
In developing our local control accountability plan.
Right.
And listening to their interests, and including some of the student input into the actual plan that we've developed for the coming year.
Great, good to hear.
So, yeah, it was about a hundred folks testifying and a very good student turnout.
Okay.
And I was pleased to see our Emory students engaging in political activism.
Were you just shining and glowing since you was a school board member and seeing your students?
I sort of let it be known.
There you go.
Let it be known where I was from.
There you go, okay, great.
Move the minutes.
Move the minutes?
Second.
Second. Minutes have been, are approved. Okay, let's now move to the informational items. Student member updates. Members Steph and Member Carr.
Good evening, everyone. Since the school year's over, we only have two events to speak about, which are the eighth grade promotion and the senior graduation. And both of them went really well. The speeches given by the eighth graders, as well as the seniors, were awesome. This year, we had five valedictorians and one salutatorian, and we're very proud of that. And most of our students will be going to four-year universities, and we're very excited for our new beginning.
Great.
Thank you.
Is that it?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to say a few words about our experience as members on this board, and it's been great. And we've really enjoyed the chance to have spoken out about the things that our students care about, and us being the mediums that they spoke out through. And we just wish that those students that come after us and that will sit on this board continue to bring the student voices out and share with the Board here what the students have to say about everything.
That's great, okay, great. Thank you very much.
Miguel, could we ask the graduates to tell us which colleges they're going to in the fall, which are very prestigious?
Please do.
I'll be attending UC Berkeley.
Great. Yeah.
And I'll be attending San Francisco State University.
All right, that's my alma mater. All right, okay, well, thank you. So, on behalf of the City Schools Committee, Aditi and Jasmine, we want to present you with a certificate of participation for all your hard work being on the committee, bringing your updates, and most importantly, being, I mean terrific students throughout your career here at Emory. Both of you all are honor roll students, and you both have just done an excellent job within the school district. And also coming, as I said, coming here to this committee, voicing, giving the voices of students, whether it be some concerns that they have, or things that are just happening at the sites in the district, you know, that they're being. So we're so happy that you all were two of our students, we're going to miss you, but we want to wish you all the luck in your upcoming endeavors, and continue your student voice as you move on to the next level, getting involved with organizations on campus, committees, whatever it may be, to continue your civic leadership, and one day be sitting in our position, you know, being elected officials governing a community. So we want to thank you, and I have these two certificates for you, for you both. Jasmine?
You're welcome. Aditi?
Yes.
You're welcome. Make sure that we get it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair, before we move on from the student members, can we get some kind of an update as to who are the incoming student members, or what the process is for choosing them?
I don't know, and I don't have the history yet on, I'm sorry, I don't know the history and the selection in the past and how it was done, and maybe the student members can actually speak to it.
You've got a good advisory committee here.
Yeah, 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 there you can tell us, or what you think, and maybe what we should change.
How we were selected was because we were student officers, and Ms. Brenda had asked student officers to sign up for positions on different boards, and so I'm assuming she's going to do the same for the upcoming year.
Good.
Yes, and we will make sure that happens our first board meeting.
Very good.
In August.
I was just going to say, I think today's Brenda's birthday.
Oh, really?
Yeah, if memory serves me.
Okay, right, right.
Happy birthday, Brenda.
Happy birthday, Brenda.
Happy birthday, Brenda. Do you know all the Emory staff birthdays?
Just a few, just a few.
Put it in memory.
Okay, we will move now to the next item, item B, the COC report? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right. We're going to move item D up now, the wellness update, wellness center ECCL update.
I'm Juliette Dunn, I'm the Wellness Director, and one of the things I wanted to do was continue to bring you some information on the ECCL Health Center and all the things that we're going to be doing with it, because it's a collaborative endeavor between the city as well as the schools. We had a meeting with all the parties who are involved with it on the twenty-third of June, because I gathered the meeting to make sure that we all started planning for next year, so that we could meet regularly, and we're going to be doing that on the third Tuesday, so that we have new partners, not new partners, but new players. The school-based health center meant the Lifelong, who's the medical lead, they have new players, and all of us hadn't met each other for a while, and we used to meet quite regularly, Cindy and myself, and Roy, but since Roy has left, it kind of fell by the wayside. So we gathered that meeting, and we're going to be talking about managing our expectations, the fiscal realities of how to put the center together, and all the things that you need to do before you even open the doors. So that's one of the things that we're doing. The Youth Advisory Board had about six to eight students this summer do a summer intensive. One of the things that we want to do is continue input from students on the health center, and they went to visit WAMs, which is the West Oakland Middle School Clinic, as well as RISE, which is the Richmond Health Center and Youth Services, to get an idea of what one looks like, what a health center looks like, that's based on a school premises, talk to the people, find out what's going on, and then give us recommendations. And to continue that through the year, these are all students who are going to be returning to Emory Secondary, and get an idea of what kind of surveys they want to put together, work on some general information, and then just give us the student perspective. We're also planning, or I'm planning, to work with some city members, too, I'm going to work with Cindy, too, I think Brad and the seniors, to get a survey out to them, to the general populace, so that we can find out what it is we need to do in terms of the community and the health centers there. And that will all be continuing, because I don't want to walk into the center and think, okay, now what do we do here? Because we want to plan this ahead of time. I also set up a meeting on the fourteenth of July with our medical lead, not medical lead, Lifelong, because one of the things that, the person that we used to deal with, we have a new person now, and we also have the architects who want to deal with the person who's in charge of the facility, so that we can, since now the buildings are starting to go up, and we have general information that we'd like to put together, we're going to meet on the fourteenth, and I've invited several people to do that over at Lifelong. So as soon as I get some more information from there, we will move forward with that. But basically, it's just a series of meetings, making sure that everybody's updated, and making sure that you're updated on the things that we're doing. Okay, any questions?
Any questions from any of the members?
Okey-dokey.
Do we have any questions from the public? Ms. Dunn, thank you for that report, but before you leave, I kind of want, and I'm kind of glad you had, made this presentation, because this was kind of on my mind for future agendized items that I kind of wanted staff to think about. For next year, as we move along next year, if we can start having more items on the agenda that really relates to the programmatic things that'll be happening at the ECCL site when we move into, so, you know, like the wellness, and what kind of partners, you know, we're looking at engaging with. Because if the vision is to have this facility open from seven in the morning to seven at night, so we can now start, you know, hearing and talking about what the programs look like from the city side, what the library look like, from the school side, what wellness will look like, what our partnership with maybe Prodigy Community College looks like, so we can, you know, as a committee, really see what our programs will look like as we start moving towards the opening of the ECCL project.
That's good. That's one of the reasons I asked to be on the agenda, because I think we were losing sight of some of the things that we're doing, and we're doing a lot of things, but nobody knows unless you communicate that, and get input back from the people who are working with us.
Exactly, and I think at this time, it's most important, as you said, you know, since the building's about to be erected, now is really start, now is the time to really start looking at what our programs look like as we move into the new facility. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else, any other questions, nothing? Okay, we'll now move to the next item, which will be the ECCL update. Mr. Baker.
Is it working? Okay, great. Can everyone hear me?
Mm-hmm.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm John Baker with Swinerton, and we're the district's owners representative consultant. I'm just going to give a quick update on progress over at the ECCL site. First, some photographs that show the remediation action work plan work, which is the solar mediation work, which is just about complete. Just a quick overview. When we started about a month ago, we had a number of monitoring equipment in place to monitor dust, hazardous materials, and other items to make sure that they did not impact this random community. This is actually a dust monitor. We staged equipment and trucks on the site, this is on the side of the old school, you can see the gym behind it, and that's kind of our staging area. The first work we did was placing down some plastic sheeting before we did soil stockpiling, so this was about three weeks ago. This is the first demolition. There is an area which we call the methane area, which is areas of soil where methane had been indicated maybe, maybe evident, so that was the first work we did, was excavate that work, that soil, and then, that's a little close-up there, and then stockpile that soil and sample it. So we had about two hundred truckloads of soil offhauled from the site. Of the site that was, of the soil was excavated and tested, approximately forty percent of it could remain on-site, and I want to remind this group that the State Department of Toxic Substance Control has extremely high standards for soil on educational facility sites. So only the soil which was really truly clean remained on-site. We did offhaul another about forty percent to what's considered a clean soil, clean for other uses, but not for schools. Soil can be used for Caltrans fill, for example, and we did about twenty percent of the soil was offhauled, was what's called Class One, and that is soil which has enough, in this case, low antoxic substances like lead paint, et cetera. That was actually hauled out of state, because the state of California does not have places to put that soil. But the main thing is that all of the soil has now been off, all the soils that's going to be removed has been removed. This is about two weeks ago, the field area, this shows the excavation of that soil, and there's, you can see the track or the remains of the track there, is that soil is being removed. And this is the last piece of this that we're just finished up last week, last couple of weeks, at the parking lot. And this is actually preparation work for putting backfill material in, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But the good news is that we have now completed this, except for placing backfill material. The cost to date is, and this is, there are a lot of unknowns with this kind of work, we could have encountered a far greater amount of soil that was contaminated that had to be hauled out of state, we could have found a larger area than the testing information showed us, but we're right about on the cost approved to date by the district, which is actually a little bit below our budget, and this is probably the highest risk part of the project in terms of cost, is unforeseen soil conditions. So I want to go over a little bit of a schedule update. The top schedule is the solar mediation raw work and demolition completion. The bottom is actually the chart showing the finalization of Turner's lease-leaseback agreement and commencement of construction. So just real quick, you can see the data red line is where we are, so we've got the, those AOC numbers are just, are areas of soil that are indicated in the report, but the soil at the field is now completed and offhauled at the parking lot. We're actually completed with offhaul last week, all except for one more batch that goes out tomorrow, and then we'll be completely done with offhaul. You'll see that where it says methane backfill. Now, this, originally, the plan had been to, if we had offhauled enough soil that we'd need to put soil back, so we could build buildings on top of it, we're going to use clean import fill. The State Department of Toxic Substance Control typically wants to have your solar mediation completely done before you start construction. About three weeks ago, the project team on site asked the question that we're going to excavate for foundations, and whether that foundation excavation soil could be used for backfill material. Typically, they like to finish one operation before they start the other, but our DTSC rep has been extremely collaborative, and actually has now just, early this week, approved the use of the clean excavation for foundations to be used as backfill material. What that means is instead of bringing backfill material to the site and filling up to make the site level, they're actually allowing us to start early excavation and use that, what are called spoils from the excavation for foundations for the future buildings to be used for backfill material. It's double savings, you don't have to import soil, and the soil we're going to excavate for foundations doesn't have to be offhauled. And so I just want to thank the Turner, Furma, and our Swinerton folks on site for working together to actually make that a reality. We thought this might be a possibility two weeks ago, we thought it was a very low probability, but Jose Luavo of DTSC has really worked hard to allow us to amend the report. It turns out, we have a bit of time before construction starts in August, so we actually had a window where we could push this out three or four weeks, and that'll still be complete, as you see, in early August. He's also allowing us to do a report now, before that backfill was placed, which is also an exception of the usual process. They'll do that review and approval, and then we can complete demolition the first two weeks in August, which will sync up with the schedule below, I'll show you. So that was actually a really good outcome, round numbers, approximately a hundred thousand dollars in savings to the project by DTSC allowing to do this out-of-sequence work. You'll see the lower chart is the scheduled finalized Turner lease-leaseback agreement. I think some of you have seen this, various versions of this chart before. Over the last three weeks, we've been doing a number of things. We received a DSA, Division of State Architect review and approval, which is the single biggest regulatory milestone on this project, the second being the DTSC approval, and that was accomplished June sixteenth. Turner, the last three weeks, has been updating the subcontractor bids based on the final DSA-approved documents. We had a good scope confirmation work session with stakeholders from the city and the district the week of June sixteenth, June eighteenth, I believe that was. We have a final, another final version of that after we get bid information next week, on the fifteenth, and we'll finalize some scope revisions to make sure that we're within project budget. This last week, we confirmed the project milestone schedule, which is substantial preliminary completion of the pool and gym in July of next year, with final completion in August, preliminary completion of the high school in October of next year, with final completion in December, and then project completion in, I believe it's May of two thousand and sixteen. And that now will become the contract schedule when we take that schedule to both of your, the Board and Council later this month and early in August. This week, we are, have been negotiating indirect costs, these are, what's called general conditions and fee costs with Turner Construction, and in fact, I'll be meeting with them tomorrow morning to finish up that effort. The contract amount will then be finalized at the, by the end of next week, we set a deadline of July eighteenth for that, and that will be all the, all of the contract terms, which both of your bodies have had preliminary readings of, though we have not revised any of those terms, but we need to plug in the schedule and final cost information, and we'll be complete with that a week from tomorrow, and then we'll send information packets out to Council and the Board the week of the twenty-first. There is a special meeting of the Board scheduled for the thirtieth of July for approval of the Turner lease-leaseback agreement and the joint operating agreement. That'll be followed by Council review and approval of that on a special meeting for August sixth. After that, we do what's called notice to proceed, which is where we, oops, sorry about that, which is where we get all the bonding, all the bonding and insurance documents and things of that nature from Turner, and with actual mobilization and construction of the project, which will be rough grading and foundation work starting in mid-August. And so that is the schedule that has been presented by Turner, that'll actually go in this part of the contract.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baker. Are there any questions from any of the members, from Mr. Baker?
End date of the construction is going to be in the spring of sixteen?
That's correct.
And now, how does that impact the school? Are we going to be able to utilize it before that time?
Yes, we are. Mr. Baker, if you would explain to the committee the staggered. Yes, so there are really three milestones in the schedule. The first is completion of the gym and pool in the next summer. The second is the completion of the high school in the fall for occupancy for, in the spring school semester in January. The plan always has been to complete the high school first and have the remaining parts of the school, the fields, the K-through-eight school, and the other, not the library, but the other community facilities completed after that.
And you could do the construction while the high school students are there?
That is correct. And the construction that will be taking place when the high school students are there will be interior finishes, all of the buildings will be complete and closed in, so there'll be some landscaping work and interior finishes, walls, flooring, cabinets, things like that. Well, that's really what, once the high school students have moved in, the remaining activities are all really inside the building, so it's fairly low impact to the student population.
So.
Do we have a secure contract with Oakland School District for that school through January sixteen?
That contract negotiation is complete, and they have to take it to the school board, and we'll bring it to our board, but the negotiation is done, and we haven't agreed upon a price. And you may have said this just now, maybe I missed it, but we're trying to make sure that the swimming facility or pool is done by July of next spring. Yeah, July, next, next, the final completion in Turner's, preliminary completion is when they, the project's complete, but we do what's called punch lists, we do our inspections to make sure things are done. Final completion is scheduled for August, so that means that their current schedule shows that the school could, that the pool and gym could be occupied, and we could start moving in that facility in July of next year. Right, and then students could possibly be moving in in the fall, we're looking maybe... We're looking, maybe. Correct. The schedule's been, the strategy behind the schedule has been to have the preliminary completion, or what's called substantial completion, in October, so that we could move in over the Thanksgiving holiday, and one of the, the idea behind that is that Oakland Unified may want to have some of the holiday period in December to move into the current, the current facility. That hasn't been determined yet, but the idea is that we would at least have the opportunity to start doing, move in at the Thanksgiving holiday of this year, of next year.
And what is happening with the furniture and things like that? Is there a track for that that's been required? I know that's not construction, but I'm asking the school district, do they have a plan?
I believe, isn't that in the budget?
Yes, I think that, if you recall, the budget, yeah, the budget, the budget presentation that was made to the, that was made to the council and also has been made to the board, the total project budget is approximately $90 million. Of that, approximately $60 million is the Turner Construction contract. The remainder of that is consultant fees, soft costs, but also furniture, fixtures, and equipment. There's approximately, if memory serves me, about $4 million for furniture, for furniture. So that will be parallel to the construction. Once we start construction, we're going to be ramping up the selection of furniture with the architectural consultants and procurement of that. That sets a parallel track to construction.
It's kind of important that the teachers and the students have some kind of input into the furniture. Has the school board considered that? The school board?
They have already, but.
My understanding is there was, there was some student input, but, and then I think what we're going to need to do is, as we're going along, we're going to check the amount of furniture that has been purchased so far, because if there is the availability in the timeline and process to include students, and looking at some more alternative types of furniture, when we're looking at 21st century classrooms and how they are different, then yes, I have started to explore the few companies that offer those kinds of things, but I will first need to assess with Mr. Baker what we've purchased so far, what we have budgeted so far for that item, but I would definitely be, I am already thinking about that and looking for opportunities for that.
Because I think millennials have a little different attitude to our furniture than we do.
Yes.
I think in the original design, students had an input on what that design looked like for furnitures and how they were laid out, but I think.
Yeah, what's been developed is a program, a list, a furniture list, and a budget. My understanding is that there are stakeholders, and I believe students, involved in that original effort.
Yeah.
There still is design work to do, even though we're, construction is off and running, the design, if you will, of the furniture needs to take place, the finalized design. And one of, there's a member of the architectural team who's going to be leading that effort along with stakeholders, and that can include students. I don't, and I, we have not done that yet, we'll, that, the schedule for that is going to be in this coming fall, as we start construction, then we shift to the furniture selection, and that stakeholder process will then take place, including students, teachers, city, and district reps.
You get from the user, whether it's going to work for everybody.
Exactly.
But the input to date has been on sort of the design of the cabinetry and the classrooms and.
That was in schematic.
Yeah, in the schematic design, and the, and the approach from the, from the schematic is, is for very flexible sort of configurations, not just traditional, you know, factory-style classrooms, but very, kind of, yeah, multiple configuration.
Right. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Baker, thank you very much.
Mr. Baker, can we get this, can you email this one page to the?
Sure, yeah, we, I typically forward these to Lisa Tameray, and then she, I always do that every, but I'll coordinate with.
If you can ask her to forward that on to the City Schools Committee, I think people would appreciate having her.
Sure.
Okay. So, with that being said, we'll move on to the next item, and I don't think, I think that will be scratched, the C O C report.
He's not here?
No, he's not here. Okay, okay. Are there any more questions coming from the?
When is the next meeting?
Good question.
First Thursday in October.
The first Thursday in October, okay.
Okay.
And so then, we're all set for our August 6th meeting, I take it, for the contract for Turner? For some reason, I don't remember that date, for the.
The August, the August 6th meeting for the council has the Turner contract and the J O A.
Okay.
This is the vacation you promised us? What is this?
Okay, we have no, we have no, no action items?
Move to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.
It's a great meeting.
I think I like this meeting.